Anybody else in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition.
Mr. President, members of the Lynn City Council, I'm Attorney Richard Cuff. I'm here tonight representing Attorney Jim Carrier, who owns the property immediately adjacent to the proposed site. The process of remaking the city of Lynn started there. It moved back in the 50s and the 60s. It eliminated the brickyard and surrounding areas, and resulted in a loss of large homes and work sites. More recently, part of that effort had reflected in the development of the cultural district that runs from Broad to Essex Street, and borders the site of the proposed laundromat. There is a reason why the City Council has a central role in this special permit process. That is, a need to decide whether the laundromat is appropriate for a particular neighborhood, and that it will, and whether or not it will result in the likelihood of a disruption of such neighborhood. 597 Essex Street is inappropriate for locating a laundromat. This is a residential neighborhood bordering on live residential condominium, a slum, a machinery loss, containing some units, some 20 units, all with their own washers and dryers. It is across the street from the Lynn District Court and immediately adjacent to City Hall. A laundromat operated daily for extended periods of proposed area is incompatible with the character of neighborhood. My client has owned 15 Johnson Street since 1982. In a real sense, I grew up in that location before it was acquired by my client. Since my family operated W.A. Cuff's son funeral home at 15 Johnson Street for nearly 35 years. Presently, there is limited parking provided for my client and his customers in his yard. The spill over into his lot, which is certain to occur, will increase as a result of the presence of a laundromat. Parking in the area is generally limited. The City Hall workers, District Court employees, and visitors would be further crowded out by the customers of the laundromat. The cultural district is a creation that is underway in an effort to make the city of Lynn more attractive. A hearing on the program was recently held here at City Hall. Would the presence of a laundromat at the proposed site enhance the city's image? I'd say it would not. The Mount Olive Church on Johnson Street, diagonally across the street from my client's office, has recently undertaken a substantial renovation of the building at great expense through its congregation. How would a laundromat enhance the church? And in fact, it wouldn't. There is a fundamental lack of need for another laundromat in this area. With less than a quarter mile away, you have at least five other operating laundromats. You have one on Washington Street at the corner with Henry Avenue. You have one on Essex Street on the corner with Ruckerway Street. You have one on Franklin Street, one on Washington Street, one on State Street, and another one on Common Street. Why do we need another laundromat, particularly in this most sensitive area? My opinion is, we do not. The city is actively trying to upgrade its image and establish its brand by the development of the cultural district. Allowance of a special permit for yet another laundromat would be incongruous with those efforts, and would not be a wise strategic choice. It would not add to any quality jobs to the city of Lynn. I'll answer any questions, anyone like that.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. Harry Borealis, Essex Street. And I just want to say that a lot of neighbors are opposed to this. And the reasons, Breckin, would know all of them, so I just want to say are opposed.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing, Councilor Breckin.
Mr. President, through you to the members speaking oppositions in this permit. It's really not an easy thing to do, to say no to any business coming wanting to locate the downtown. And I appreciate the petitioners' honesty and patience throughout the whole process. We can be very straightforward with myself, as well as residents and businesses. It's just simply not the right use for this area. It's been illustrated by my constituents, as well as property owner Jim Carrier, who also wants the area. Another concern relative to parking, relative to trash, voiding, hours of operation. And to be honest with you, I just don't think it's the right fit. As councilors, we don't want to be nitpicky, saying which business should go here or there. But I think we've taken a pretty bold step in pursuing the acts of cultural district in the downtown. And a number of councils are working very hard on that, as well as myself. I think it'd be a shame to begin to loosen some of those ambitions and let businesses come in. And again, this is no offense in the petition in terms of hiring businesses in the area. It's just not the right site for this. So I make a motion to...
Motion made and seconded to deny. Discussion, Councilor Cane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the members, I'd just like to concur with Councilor Breckin. And I'd like to thank Attorney Josh Allen for the presentation. It was well thought of, and in favor of it. And the gentleman looks as though he runs very clean, petal businesses in the city of Lawrence. And he sounds to be a very sound businessman. For the reasons that the Council of Breckin laid out, the parking, we've got an auditorium that now has shows, a couple with the court, a couple with the City Hall, a couple with new tenants in various buildings. The market situation is not ideal, and there is, and from the neighbors' concerns as well. So, but we do not think we can choose winners and losers in the business game. I agree with Councilor Breckin that this may not be the best fit for this particular parcel.
Okay, yes, vote would be to deny. Roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cane?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Breckin?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
If I may, to the petitioner from the chair. The city is always looking for good, well-run businesses. You have a very well-respected attorney in the community who does have a great reputation. I would recommend that both of you reach out to our community development team, Jamie Marsh and Jimmy Cardella, EDIC, to try to find a location that may be more palatable and fit into the community. We encourage you to do so. Doors of the city of Lynn are always open, so thank you.
Petition of 133 Eastern Real Estate, Paul F. Gallo, permission to allow apartment house use in a light industrial zone at 133 Eastern Avenue.
Open the public hearing, if anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Mr. President, members of the Lynn City Council, I'm still Attorney Richard Cuff. Okay, tonight, representing Paul F. Gallo, who is up here on my right. He's a local developer who's been dealing with this particular parcel of land since the fall of 2006, when he received a special permit from the City Council to allow the construction of a single-family townhouse on the premises. The original development plan called for the construction of some 20 residential units, a townhouse-style building on the site. Due to such a drastic change in the residential real estate market, the developer was forced to substantially scale back the building and subsequently sold a total of eight of those residential units, using some 15,800 square feet, a total of 40,500 square feet. The remainder of the parcel containing some 24,700 square feet is proposed for the site of a five-story, 45-unit building intended for occupancy by senior tenants that age 62 or older. The units will consist of seven one-bedroom units, and a management office, and a community room on the first floor; 10 one-bedroom units on each of the second, third, and fourth floors, plus a lounge on each level; and eight one-bedroom apartments, plus a lounge, and two roof decks on the fifth floor. The special permit being sought due to the fact that the subject property is currently situated in a light industrial district, other than the present allowed use designation, proposed building will comply with all applicable zoning dimensional requirements, including parking for elders, all for folks. As designated as elderly housing, the property will have a supervising management who will assist tenants to live independently within the services to provide, to be provided on an as-needed basis by independent contractor entities. Our client has worked very closely on this project with Ward Three Council, Darren Lloyd, over the past two years. Seer, can I say more? Sorry. The changing demographics of the area are indicative of an aging population desirous of obtaining market-rate rentals for seniors. The simple fact is that many seniors are frequently not qualified for subsidized housing allowances are discovered from the usual link-in delay in qualifying for such benefits. In summary, with respect to the earth, the council would act favorably on the special permit application before approval of this special permit petition will result in the creation of first-class building for housing elderly tenants at market rental rates, thereby satisfying an ever-increasing need for local senior citizens to obtain quality housing for themselves. I have obtained a petition that has been signed by each of the eight owners of the existing townhouses that are also located on the site. If you look over here on this prime structure, the townhouses are there in the front, and the proposed building is further behind. Are there any questions I can answer?
We'll continue with the public hearing, and at the very end, if anybody has any questions, thank you, Attorney Cuff. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing, Councilor Seer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Angry with Attorney Cuff, Cuff what? Cuff one. I've been working with Paul F. Gallo now since I became the council of this property. And he hit it after a long time, the market kind of fell out. It was going to be a large development, a condominium. Could've walked away from it at any time, but instead chose to stick it out. He finally got eight of the units sold, and then stopped looking at the property and trying to think of a way to, you know, make it more pleasing to the neighborhood. And it came up with a pretty good idea. It's senior housing, it's the first of its kind in the city. It's actually changed some zoning laws, brought us up to date here in Lynn. Because of this particular property, it's going to bring taxes to the city, it'll bring at least 100 construction jobs over the next few years, and it's going to provide service to our seniors in the city with assisted living. I am 100% in favor of this project. I encourage my colleagues to join me in approval of it. Make the motion to move.
Seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cane?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Breckin?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey? Absent Councilor Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. Next petition, petition of El Quetzal, Artigaz, permission for an eat-in and take-out restaurant with approximately 24 seats with hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week at 170 Union Street Unit B.
Open the public hearing, if anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Ronald Rivera, the contractor and also the designer for the place. He's, I believe, Artigaz, and he still runs the business. We just asked him permission to allow, it's actually a convenience store right now, which is not doing so well. And when he wants to, has changed it from a convenience store to a restaurant. The place is only 760 square feet, so table would be limited based on zoning laws and also the building code. And design, anything that would affect people would have to have additional bathrooms and stuff like that in that building. Design of the building is not only allowed to have a maximum capacity below, so we're going to keep it at the minimum. And the operation, the hours of operation will be from 7:00 to 10:00 at night. The owner of the building is allowed us to move the downstairs, so everybody will maintain and maintain. Right now, it's only him and his wife, President President. But if the business does well, he may hire new people to work. It's basically, it'll be more like a Spanish food eat-in. To put the Spanish food in, it will be different stuff.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing, Councilor Calucci.
The motion to approve, subject to, they pull all the permits necessary, and they apply by the city ordinance as it was.
Motion made, seconded for approval. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Biden?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cane?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Breckin?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford? Absent Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan? Yes, ten, yes. Public hearing on an ordinance amending a portion of the zoning map of the City of Lynn and zone ordinance of the City of Lynn regarding Weston Avenue, Center Street, Marion Street, Water Hill Street, and Spencer Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Tower, and I would be very much approved for this, in favor of this new store opening. It would give a lot of people a job, and a lot of people would shop in West Lynn because that would be the only shopping grocery store in West Lynn. And that's what I wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, members of the City Council, my name is James Ward. I'm a lawyer from Bradley Morton's in Covet, Webber, with offices at 85 Exchange Street in Lynn, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of a federal street holdings limited liability company, who has a purchase and sale agreement to comply with what we commonly call the West Lynn GE. They have entered into this agreement with GE on the strength of the agreement, Market Basket, to open up a Market Basket on the site. So I'm here to talk about what would happen if you were to rezone from Heavy Industries Business. Market Basket, I'm sure most of you are familiar with them. They're high-quality products at tremendous value. They have about 69 stores now, and estimated above $3 million in annual sales. The concept that they're after here is to take the first floor of what we call the factory of the future and extend it out towards Water Hill Street, resulting in a first-floor Market Basket of about 80,000 to 90,000 square feet, about 20%, 25% larger than the store in Salem, if you're familiar with that store, and about 35% larger than the store in Middleton, which is the one that my wife has been driving to. So I'm looking forward to driving right down to Federal Street. I can see it off my back door. And looking forward to shopping in Market Basket. They estimate that there are about 100 full-time and 400 part-time jobs available in a store of this size. They yet have no specific plans for the floors above the first floor, but are not planning to demolish the building and are looking to adapt the top floors to some additional uses, depending on market conditions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone has if I agree on this project.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor?
My name's Tom Dyke, young property inspector, 86th Street. And I'm all in favor of my capacity coming to the city. I think it would be great. My only concern is, if we rezone this, and my capacity adapts up, what happens? Where it's been rezoned can now be turned into like mini strip malls. My capacity would be the best thing for this city, especially in that area. Johnny's going on Washington Street. I mean, it's leading a store in West Lynn. But my concern is, I want my capacity. I don't want many convenience stores and miniature strip malls if my capacity adapts up. I've talked to Mr. Moore before, and if the rent is guaranteed right now, my capacity is coming in.
The shot answer is no, there is no guarantee. This transaction is at the, what we call the due diligence stage. And during that stage, Market Basket wants to accomplish two things. One is get the property rezoned so that Market Basket is allowed as a matter of right on the area. And the second thing they're doing is reviewing the environmental concerns. At the end of the due diligence period, which is actually the end of this month, as I understand it, they will have to make a decision to tell that developer, we're either going to go ahead and be a tenant or not. And the result of that decision will be whether or not my client completes the purchase. I'm not limiting, because I can't tell you right now the sales price, but it's a sales price which will not support anything small. There'll be, if there's no Market Basket going to be there, my client will simply not complete the purchase and sale agreement, and will have to go on his way. And the council will then be free to rezone it again, do whatever they'd like with it. But the price prohibits anything much smaller than a grocery store the size of Market Basket.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, Councilors, Georgia Ass Creek, 18 Waller Street, on Bridge Westman, will work together. I've seen a lot of changes in Lynn and in West Lynn. And I'm for Market Basket, it's a good organization. But the things that bother me with the building, for one thing, I was a GE employee manager, and we thought we were going to have a successful building, or a building of the future. And there was a lot of thought put into that, a lot of good engineering advice, but it didn't turn out. I'm hoping actually that this will turn out, because actually, Market Basket is not buying the land. They are leasing the land. And also, what bothers me is the type of building that they're buying. They've never bought a building with a second floor. And that sort of bothers me, what they intend to do with their second floor. Also, on the other side, if they do get in there, on the other side of Federal Street, what can go in there? Would it be a mall, which would generate additional traffic? And that's one of the big problems, is if you look at the sketches, the loading dock is in the back of the building, facing Weston Avenue. So for the semis to get in there, they have to go down Spencer Street. And all of these trucks now have trouble getting down Spencer Street. And the developer bought three pieces of property down on Spencer Street, demolished them. Bought the cafe, which is opposite those, and an auto body shop, which I don't know when it's going to be done, develops. And then also bought the Lynn Public Library, which is going to make a condo, which I don't know if that's going to materialize. And he bought a house on the corner wall in West Lynn, tore it down. And now the postal people are using it for a parking lot. Now we got the florists on the corner of Spencer Street across that, we got a rental furniture place. And above that, you got Dunkin' Donuts, Marverines, the Grease Monkey. And if you come down Weston Avenue during the day, the people going from Salem to Boston to Boston to Salem, the traffic is unbelievable. And there's very a lot of heavy trucking, a lot of heavy trucking. So what puts, I want to see Lynn get new jobs. There's no telling, especially when we lost a little lumber company, which had been here for years. Johnny's School Market, which had a lot of Lynn employees. I want to see Lynn get a good business and make a go of it, and help the unemployment. But I'm worried, really, about the traffic congestion in the Grade Square, really. It really is difficult now. And I'm just wondering if they have a plan to really revamp the traffic control, like they're trying to do in Wyoming Square. I am not against it, but I have a lot of these questions I'd like to have answers for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor?
I'd like to clarify, Mr. President. Judge, very nice judge to speak in favor of Market Basket. The other developer who's talking about who bought lots of property in the neighborhood is not this fellow. It's a different person, a very nice person, but different than this particular person.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing, excuse me. Before I close the public hearing, I have a letter from the Planning Board ready to record.
The Planning Board recommends the Lynn City Council that they approve the amendment to the City of Lynn's own map and City of Lynn's own ordinance to remove from a heavy industrial district and establish the same as land in a business district, all of the land lying between and bonded by Weston Avenue, Center Street, Marion Street, Water Hill Street, and Spencer Street, and the motion carried.
Thank you. Councilor, close the public hearing, and tie it, Councilor Capano.
Yes. I'm in favor of this, I want to make that motion. But I just want, there are concerns with this. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago, it was well-attended, and the Jewish schools, some of the councils were there. And most of the concerns were above track. So, we got a list of all those concerns, and we, I talked to the attorney, the developer. There are some issues, but they're still doing due diligence, and it still might not happen. But we, the reason for having a meeting over the neighborhood was to hear all... to hear all the concerns and, and so the attorney could answer questions about, you know, about that. So mostly people like Walton Street, like Mr. Restory, care about Water Hill Street, Spencer Street, Hood Street, have some concerns, the school has some concerns, but I'm satisfied that we can, working with the developer, can accommodate most of the concerns that were brought up, you know. As far as the rezoning that was mentioned, I mean, there is, there aren't no guarantees, but anything that would have to go, they would have to come through council first and, and zone for Heavy Industrial, and, and there is probably a 99% chance that we'll never, ever be Heavy Industry in that area again. So leaving it like that would just really say that this property is off limits forever, you know, and it's been vacant for a long time. Most of the comments I had from the meeting, people were in favor of it, and calls I had to my house, people are in favor of this. So with that, I'd like to make that motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, Counsel Kapano, motion made, seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Button.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehl.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, 11 yes. We have several public hearings to be set down, I can read them together, if you want to separate them, we can.
Please.
Tishna Chef's House, James McGalvey for permission for an eat in restaurant with wine and malt license at 34 Acorn Street, Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Tishna Golden Onion Rings, Paula Romles for permission for preparation, sales and delivery among onion rings at 271 Weston Avenue, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. Petition of Comcast, Timothy Broder for permission to place one four inch PVC underground condo at 50 feet plus or minus north走向 direction to the property of 510 Washington Street. Petition to Rosetti Restaurant Group, Robert Rosetti for permission for food stall with an all alcohol beverage license at 41 Sutton Street, with the hours of operation as follows. Close Monday, Tuesday through Thursday, 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., Saturday, 2:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., except those days when the Veterans Memorial and a tournament Lynn City Mall has scheduled events.
What's with the council? Motion to set down, public hearing seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Button.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehl.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, 11 yes. Unfinished business?
Committee reports.
Committee reports, Public Works Committee, there was...
Counsel Lozey. Motion to accept the report.
I, no vote to take it, motion approved.
Motion to accept the report. Fourth, seconded, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Ordinance Committee, there was a motion to set down a public hearing before the full council and the ordinance to establish Miller Rights Normal Modus as amended in this emergency request.
Counsel Seer.
Oh, man, this might be a very good question.
Seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Button.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehl.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, and they request an emergency.
Roll call on the emergency.
Counsel Button.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehl.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Public Property Committee, was motion to transfer three Suzuki Model ATVs from the Lynn Police Department to the Lynn Fire Department, emergency order to accept the bid of Wendy Joseph for 38 York Way Street for the consideration of $100.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Button.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehl.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, 11 yes. We have several findings, I can read them together, you can separate them if you want. Order that the city controller take the following action, transfer the sum of $100,000.00 from the insurance loss to transfer account to the ISD maintenance contracts account, transfer the sum of $87.50 from the DPW outside professional technical expense account to the account of unpaid bills of prior years, here applies available fund the amount of $417,301.00 as awarded to the City Lynn School Department by the Massachusetts Department of Education. These funds are designated for the ESE Title II A carryover, Grand Grand Perry, 1214, 12 to 3113. Transfer the sum of $200,000.00 from the account of street light expense, $175,000 in ISD maintenance contracts, and, I'm sorry, to ISD maintenance contracts, $25,000 to ISD school OT.
Counsel Calucci. All units, also the Finance Committee, motion to approve, I hear seconded. Discussion, roll call.
Counsel Button.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehl.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, 11 yes. And we request an emergency.
On the emergency, roll call, please.
Counsel Button.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehl.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, 11 yes. And we have a communication from Michael J. Donovan. You want to read that?
If you have, if you're going to read it, and if we have any questions for Mr. Donovan prior to setting it, Mr. Donovan is here.
On November 6, 2012, the Marshall School Building Committee voted unanimously to proceed with construction management at risk delivery method with the construction of the third good Marshall Middle School. At this time, the committee is in the process of completing the application for the office of the Inspector General to use construction management at risk for this project. As part of this application, a certification must be made too, and enforced by the legal counsel for the city attesting that the Marshall Middle School Building Committee is authorized to enter into a contract for the construction management at risk firm. As such, I have attached the certification and respectfully requesting your endorsement of saying I am available at your convenience to discuss this matter, sincerely, Michael J. Donovan, ISD Director.
Proper form, made to make a motion to approve the endorsement of this certification. Counsel Calucci, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Button.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehl.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, 11 yes. And we request an emergency.
On the emergency.
Counsel Button.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehl.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.